Call the meeting to order, verify that everyone received the meeting notice, and adopt the agenda. Okay, let's stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number three on the agenda, comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration or anything currently on the agenda for this evening?
Dave Winrow, I think that's what I have to do, right?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to do a couple of quick points. I really wish the board would look at a couple of items. Create a better agenda that is more informative of the topics that are actually going to be discussed so that laypeople like myself know what action on school calendar means, not just a day out of school next October, but it's really that you're looking at revamping the starting and end times of the school. Not everybody knows how to read your agenda and wants to bury themselves through 35 pages of attachments to find out what the topic is, to know if it's important or not. You need to look at making an agenda that is much more informative so at first blush, I know if I need to look further. Second thing, I think the board needs to look at a better way to inform all parents and families in the district of issues, details of issues, before items come to a vote. I'm a little bit backed up on some of the items, specifically this whole school calendar issue, but in looking back at the last three months' worth of meeting agendas, it's not real clear any detail other than the same one letter repeated three separate times on three different agendas. Lastly, I just wanted to talk to the board and remind them that their priorities are the taxpayers, the parents, and the students first, administration and teachers second. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else have any comments on the agenda items currently for this evening or anything for the future? Okay. And let's move on to number four, the consent agenda. A, accept the trophy display case donation from RG Luco. B, accept donation of a wireless microphone package. C, approval of open enrollment seats. D, approval of December 6, 2011 special school board minutes and December 12, 2011, and January 9, 2012 regular school board minutes. And E, approval of January vouchers and vouchers payable. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? T.J.
A and B, please.
A and B. Bernie, E.
E.
Anyone else? I'd like to remove D. So that leaves C. Anyone want to make a motion to approve C? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, C is passed. T.J., A.
It's just customary to say thank you other than consent agenda for both A and B. Donations are greatly appreciated all the time. So with that, I'm going to put a motion forward to accept A and B.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to say that I walked down to see it before the meeting started. It's beautiful. It's beautiful, so thanks. I didn't walk down to see the wireless microphone, however, but just the trophy case. Okay, so that's A and B. Okay, D. I had printed this out and, of course, I left it somewhere on the, I have to find the minutes. On the December 12 minutes, under the consent agenda, it says there were none, and then it says that items were asked to be removed, so we just need to strike that, there were none. And that was the only thing I had, so I would make a motion to approve D then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And Bernie, E.
E, on the vouchers payable, just a couple of quick questions. Doug, the expenditure we have, it's the same amount, $299.75 to American industrial leasing. It's described blanket, district office. Is that, is this some type of lease payment or, because it's always the same amount?
Yes, we have, I'm trying to scroll and pass it here.
I think it's on page five.
It's on. Our copy machines that we have in the district, we lease them so that every few years we're able to turn them over and get new ones without having to have a big expenditure, so.
And then there was a payment to GE Capital for our computers, about $105,000. That is our first payment. How many more of those do we have? I don't know whether they're all budgeted, but.
Yeah, I think there are three more of them.
It's a three-year lease, so.
Oh, okay, then there would be two years after this.
Two years after first. And then the last one, I'm assuming this is part of the renovation project, Blument Builder Supply, $138,000. It has a project number 1170004. I'm assuming that's probably a construction disbursement for work completed.
Yes.
Okay, that is correct. Okay, then I make a motion to approve January vouchers and vouchers payable as presented. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Number five, old business. A, discuss and take possible action on the 2012-2013 calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to accept this presented.
For a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's have some discussion. You want to take us through it, Lowell, or?
Yeah, we kick it off because the email I sent the board, and I don't know if all of you had a chance to look at it because you were at work and stuff, and I certainly know the community didn't have a chance to. But number one, I was very proud to work with the administrative team and the teachers that presented a couple of weeks ago on this topic. We all know that the mission of the school district is to give the highest quality personalized educational experience, preparing our kids for a future in a global society. This past week, I was able to go to the state education convention, and I had the opportunity to spend over three hours with Bill Daggett, who's considered one of the leading authorities on school reform and improving student achievement. One thing I wanted to stress that our admin team stressed is our purpose for doing this, our sole purpose, is not to inconvenience anybody, but to provide improved educational opportunities for our kids. Every year, Daggett hosts the Model Schools Conference where the top 20 schools in the nation are identified, and then through a meta, based on a meta-analysis of high-performing schools, the following have been identified as the five keys to improving academic achievement. High culture of, culture of high expectations. That's something that the whole district already has. Instruction must be rigorous and relevant, strong relationship between teachers, administrators, students, a system-wide focus on literacy, and focused sustained professional development. Our proposal before the board tonight provides focused and sustained professional development, which is so critical to improving academic achievement. Within the next two years, this is really a major change, we'll be required to make a major curriculum change to Common Core standards. The Common Core standards are aligned with college and readiness expectations. They are clear, understandable, and consistent. There is rigorous content and application of knowledge through higher-order skills, and Common Core standards are informed by other top-performing countries so that all students are prepared to succeed in the global economy and society, which is nicely aligned with our current mission statement. The key to the Common Core, we're shifting from the WKCE to NAEP, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. That means we need to realign things. This will require teachers to rewrite Common Assessment based on new Core standards. The style of questioning from teacher to student is a major shift from straight factual to within real-world applications. The proposed release time will allow our teachers to work together to develop educational strategies to meet the mission of personalized education for all students while preparing them for the changes in state requirements. This is important for everybody to understand that transitioning to new standards and more importantly, the new assessments will require vision, gaining commitment and consensus, planning, time, and increased instructional capacity that requires teachers to teach with an expanded repertoire of skills. When you adopt this release model, you'll be giving the students of the Whitnall School District the advantage of instructors who are getting a jump on the Common Core standards, thereby preparing our students for the new test early. By staying ahead of the curve on this major shift, this provides a wonderful opportunity for our district to move from being a good district to being a great district. Many districts will probably wait till it's required two years from now. If we can be ahead of the game, we have the opportunity to be pushed by the curve rather than riding it or falling behind it. We can accomplish improved academic achievement, but only through staying focused on our goals and providing opportunities for focused and sustained professional development. And last but not least, I was extremely impressed with our principals over the past couple of weeks in exploring different options for the release time for the kids, and if board members have questions and stuff, principals are in the audience that they can answer that directly.
Questions?
Sure. I'm still a little bit confused about the transportation because I look at it now and the pickup times when school is released, there's roughly about a half an hour between each, and I can see how the buses would be able to turn the routes in time. But when I'm looking at the proposed dismissal times, particularly when we have an early release at the elementary school with the high school being out at 2:45, that's our half hour, but then I see 2:45 for the high school and the middle school at 3:05, so that's not maintaining that half an hour that I am accustomed to seeing for buses. The second question is if we could just give the public an update on some of the research that's been done on the programs and the accommodations that we are attempting to make for the families that may have transportation or childcare issues, and we'll see what happens after that.
Doug, since I missed something on the transportation jump in, we had a meeting with the bus company and went over all of the bus schedules, which I could provide to the board if you want to. They gave us a number of different options, and obviously, the preferred option is one where there's no increase in buses, which then means there's no increase in cost. The times that are proposed right here, we reviewed with our current staff with the bus company, this is the stuff they got back from, was it Montana where they sent it or wherever it is?
They use a consultant out in Montana for routing and things.
You know, they would prefer a half-hour turnaround time, but they said what we have now is doable, and, you know, on the collaborative release days, it'll be a little bit tighter, but because the high school is not going to be doing the zero hour on the collaborative release days, that frees up flexibility with the buses at the high school level as well. Your other questions as to what other options are out there, what you've seen, Chris, I know you sent me something yesterday or today on some of the programs that were available that you were exploring, can I address that maybe? Anna or Lori?
Hello. I suppose I'll be a broken record and repeat what I said the last time. The, we have had conversations with the YMCA. The YMCA is most definitely an option. There is an option for some reduced costs there as well, as they look at not only that early release, but every day of the week. So that is an option. The rec departments are an option. Just received a parent conversation, or a parent sent an email today about mad science being an option. Another option beyond that would be the free option that we talked about using our existing staff to provide a free option for parents as well. So the goal would be to have a free option available if people, if they're not going to go home at the 2:15 time, a free option, a reduced option, price option, either through the Y, through the rec, or some other organizations that we're looking into as well, including what we already have, which is Futura Spanish, Mad Science, and others. Now, one mother brought up ballroom dancing as an option for free, but I'm not sure that we want to go that route. But anyway, so are there specifics to pricing, price points yet? No, we have to get the busing situation, or had to get that piece figured out, decide on the timeframes and so forth. But we do have commitments to sit down and talk about those reduced price options. The free option is already available. Does that help?
And the middle school, Lynn, don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know there's some kids that are transitioning that may not be able to get themselves to school that hour later.
I also would be looking to approach the Y to look into the possibility of having the Y care for the middle schoolers at that date. We have talked in the past about doing athletic programs, intramural kinds of things for kids that could possibly take place through the Y on those mornings, and we would also have the free option where we would have staff available to, you know, supervise kids for enrichment and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Stephanie?
Thank you. I have a question, just to be clear. Has changed a few times since I originally applied. So the buses for the elementary school on the collaborative release day, they are going to arrive at the same time, but the kids, the bus would come at 2:15, correct? And now, I know in the past, we used to have a late bus, it's only been gone a couple of years. I think we should look at that option as well. Now, for the middle school and high school, are, the bus, it's going to bring them at the later time or the regular time? I'm a little bit confused. Just tell me what the bus, how the buses are going to run.
You can tell right from there, the buses are going to, at the high school, what, when will the buses arrive?
They would come at the later time, so about 20 to 25 minutes prior to the start of school.
Okay, okay.
Same thing at the middle school.
We still are currently running a late bus at the elementary.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have.
But does it, it doesn't come up here, though? I mean, it doesn't come to the middle or high school?
No.
Okay.
We have tutoring and after-school programming, so it still runs.
Okay, so that is still, would be an option then, right? For those kids to go home?
There's one bus that runs between our schools.
Okay.
It's an interesting option that I had never heard of. I'd like to.
Well, we used to, it used to come to all the schools, not that long ago, just a couple of years ago, so, I mean, we could put something like that back into place. I know it's one bus now, but if it has to be two buses to get the kids home at the.
Mine's twice a week.
Twice a week, well, we'd have to go to more. Or once a week, we have to go once a week every week, so I would like that option looked at for sure.
Other comments, questions? Bill?
Can someone tell me what the additional cost to the district is likely to be, to adopt this proposal?
Unless there's something I'm not thinking about, which no one's shared with me yet, the, we already have the contracted day, so there's no increase in staffing costs. And that's usually where you get hit the most, is with staffing. And we already are paying our aides for that full eight-hour day, our instructional aides, so if we utilize them for the free option, they're already in place. What we would prefer is for them to be involved in the collaborative release time when it's applicable, but we also understand that you can't make it unbearably inconvenient for parents, so you need to provide that option if they, if parents want that option. So we're going to work on that on a revolving kind of basis so that they get, they get the chance to participate in some of the collaborative events. And then the other, the other area that could have increased cost was busing. And we went, sat down with Gloria, who's our main busing guru for our district, I think you know her, right? And Rick from the bus company, Doug, I, and they, and Rick's supervisor, and they said the, the way they had it laid out, there was no increase in busing costs. Matter of fact, they proposed some potential ways we could reduce busing costs. But that's not a direct relationship to this, it's an offshoot of looking at it so closely that we haven't done for a while. So honestly, I don't know of any increase in cost.
Regarding the cost on this, now I'm just going to throw this out there, but this is something that just about every district is, is going to be or has adopted. So if we, if we would need to spend money, I would see it on a more gradual basis, so we would possibly add late buses the first year and maybe have to provide free childcare. Then the next year, they would get it at a percentage lower, a percentage lower, kind of transitioning people into this because this is a big change for our parents. I could see putting some money into it next year if we can fit it into the budget, but then starting to ease that back as we go along. If that makes sense, so that not everybody is so shell-shocked by this.
I never thought of that late bus. Matter of fact, I mentioned in our meeting, I was used to having two bus runs as a principal. It doesn't add a new bus cost, so it wouldn't be a substantial one, it'd be a new route cost because they loop back. So I think that's something that's very doable because it's, we're not competing against another school, it's just coming back and circling around again.
T.J.
My other thing is, if we, if this passes the way it's presented, what I would ask is that we get some feedback from our principals as to what the anticipated, it ties into what Bill's question was, what the anticipated usage would be or where the parents would information out to them, letting know, coming back, finding what options, how many we're actually going to take, partake in this process, so we have an idea as to what cost, if there would be any, and then we can do that. The sooner we do that, we can incorporate it into the budget process, the better off we are. That'd be the only thing I'd have to say.
And I guess I would, I would piggyback on what T.J.'s requesting and just request regular communication updates because I think, to Suzette's point, to ease the shell shock if this is approved tonight, that regular communication with the parents is going to be imperative, that they do feel fully informed, to your point about communication with the parents, and that, that the board is also aware of what communication is taking place so that we have a comfort level, that the district administrators are talking to the parents so that if we're asked, that we can also respond appropriately to any questions we may have, that yes, it's being communicated, here's some of the avenues where the information might be. For further information, please talk to your appropriate school principal, the administrators, the superintendent. That would, that would probably go a long way on that communication piece as well.
Mike?
I'd like to say that what Stephanie just said is something that we probably should have done starting six weeks ago, and most of the contact that I've had with parents is why are we doing this now when they're just hearing about it and same old, they didn't know, they didn't look. And I advise them to go on our website. Suggestions were made that we use Alert Now for agendas. Out of the 15 to 20 different conversations I've had over this, I've had two that are in favor and the rest are opposed.
And for, for what reasons are they opposed? The time?
Exactly, yeah. And then the whole, what are you going to do with an elementary kid that's coming home? Great, you got a bus ride for him to what, a house without a parent or an older sibling? It's a problem for a lot of people. Again, I'll say for, full disclosure, I have four kids in the district. It's personally not a problem for my family. We have a sitter, we have neighbors and older siblings and that, but I can see where if we didn't, it would be a huge problem. And for those people who don't have what we have, it's a problem for them.
If we offer free, a free activity for them in a late bus, though, everything stays the same?
I agree. I think that's the communication that needs to happen before we take a vote on this. Unfortunately, it didn't.
No, I agree with you there.
And I liken it back to the vote on the reconfiguration of the elementary schools and putting all of one grade in one building. I was completely in favor of that, but the district wasn't ready for it, so I voted against it. It made sense, made logical sense to do it, financial sense to do it. But because people aren't ready for it, and we represent them, I voted against it, just like I'm going to vote against this one.
Well, it seems to me that there's three parts to the calendar issue this year. The first one being the different start times, the later start on a normal school day, a little bit later start for the high school, and the little, minor adjustments to the elementary schools and the middle school, so that'd be the one, the one issue that's new. Second issue that's new is the teacher collaboration time, which I think we all agree is very important. And then the third issue, and most importantly, is the different start times and release times, so the later start, the early release. I can see where that could be very difficult for parents, we've heard from some parents that have multiple, you know, children at different schools. I can see where it would be, you know, kind of a nightmare of trying to remember which child is going to school at which time, and is this an early day, is this a late day, is this an early release day, and, you know, who's, who's taking care of the kids and what happens? So I, I see that as a, you know, as a, as a bit of a problem. I, I still think that when we started this, we talked about the middle school teachers and the high school teachers and the elementary school teachers all being out at the same time so that the elementary school teachers could work with the middle school teachers and the middle school teachers could work with the high school teachers. So we've lost that in this plan also. I kind of like the idea that everybody does the same thing, so that everybody has early release time, everybody has late start time. I think it would make it much simpler for a lot of our parents. Lowell, you had talked about possibly another alternative.
Yeah, I was just thinking out loud, I remember the one gentleman from a couple of weeks ago talked about if you had a middle school student and an elementary school student, you could be hit with a late start at the middle school and an early release for your elementary school student. And as we talked about it, one way to avoid that altogether would be to stagger the, I mean, you wouldn't have as much at the elementary school, obviously, but you would stagger the, the days of the early release and late start. So secondary is the second and fourth Wednesday, and elementary would be the first and third Wednesday. So you would never have two kids late and early release and late start on the same day. It'd be impossible because elementaries would always be the first and third, secondary would always be the second and the fourth. It would eliminate the issue the gentleman brought up. And if it meant reducing to at least get things rolling, it's, it's a good positive first step. So we talked about that at the admin team, and if that's what's necessary for the board to have a comfort level, that would be good, too.
Nancy, is there any way? On our backup here, we have one, two, and three, these are different pieces to this. Is there any way to vote on each one separately?
Well, we tried that once, and, and we felt that it all ties together because, you know, let's say that we vote on the teacher collaboration time, but if we don't do the different start, early release, late arrival time, then that could change how that would be, so that would change the days on the calendar.
And Nancy, I, we've talked about this before. The only thing I'm gonna say is that the, the change, you're right. I, I was like you, I was an advocate of complete vertical integration, because that's what we're talking about. But when that was taken back to the schools and back to the leadership, started at administrative, then went down to the leadership group. Correct me if I'm wrong, the principals collaboratively said with the input they had received that this is more of a doable model for them. So there was some feedback given to that option. And this one came out to be the most feasible for them. To be able, you can, you're shaking your head, yeah, you can add in anytime you want.
No, I, the, that's exactly, what you're saying is exactly correct. You know, the parents, particularly at the elementary level, said that the late start was a non-starter, but that an early release is something that they, they could make happen. We talked at the PTO meeting, that was mentioned several times at the forum, that, you know, an early release rather than a late start would be, would be the better option for families. And we also mentioned that, given the start time that we had to have for elementary, if we did a late start for everybody, that amount of time for collaboration was negligible. And really not worth the inconvenience that the parents were suggesting it was gonna cause them.
So from a perspective of, of what you're talking about, I think we've addressed that issue. The main concern, I'm, I'm different because I've only had a few conversations with a few people. Change is difficult, Whitwell, as we all know. The, the advantage of a system like this is, it goes right into what Lowell had said in the beginning and he laid out his five major points. This wasn't, this was brought up through the whole ranks of, of how we're doing things differently now than we did in the past. In the past, we just had a calendar committee made up of a few. Now we have a leadership team that encompasses a lot of our people and it ties into our handbook and to everything else we're trying to accomplish here in the district. This recommendation came from them. So if I'm willing to, I'm gonna vote for it because I'm gonna leave it to their discretion at this point. If they're willing to find alternatives so we don't inconvenience the majority of our parents and they have options, then I think we're okay. And then the key will be, to me, will be, is it everything that we have been told it will be? And we'll be able to tell through the assessment process, through the grades, through the, through the testing. Now, that, that's not an overnight scenario. I mean, that's, that takes some time. And as one principal put it to me, this change affects the current population. And don't ever discount the current population, but the future population will have that, will know what the process is. So yes, we have some transition, we'll have transitional years. We've had transitional years in just about everything we've done. All the way back to, we went to new math, you know? There was a transition from where we were to where we are and where we came from. And it was, we did a transition. So I just think from a perspective of where they're coming from, they're telling us that this is what they wanna try and what they wanna do. And their, the history and the, the studies show that this should lead us to a higher achievement level in our district. And to me, that's, that's what our goal is. That's what my objective on this board is, is to make it so we give every child every opportunity to excel, to make them the better person. And I said it to a parent today, I said, we go back and we look at our, what we've done for the last twelve years, we haven't really moved much on our achievements. This is a major step. And it's been proven in other districts throughout the country that this is a model to follow. And it increases the achievement level of our kids. And that's what I believe our goal is, is to be able to provide them the opportunity to achieve. That's where I'll leave it at that.
Can I just ask the four principals, how many parents that you've talked to since we had our last board meeting? And were there any other concerns that you weren't able to address?
I talked to a number of families. Particularly at the forum, it was funny because a number of families came in, kinda loaded for bear. And by the time they left, they said they really understood the reason why we were doing it. And they were really comforted by the fact that we did talk about this transition. The reason why it's coming up as quickly as it has, I mean, there will be a lot of communication about all of the different options. But we had to bring this before the board because you were talking about the calendar and this all tied into the calendar. As we talked about options, specifically a free option or the reduced price option. And for those families that are part of the life, for instance, maybe a reduced price daily, not only just that Wednesday. That was really appealing. Plus the opportunity for some to hear that there is an enrichment. And also that there's really no decrease in the number of minutes. And as a matter of fact, there's probably an increase in the number of instructional minutes for the entire school year. So, I mean, as we talked about all of those pieces, yes, I mean, more and more families feel comfortable. I'm gonna talk about it a little bit more at the principal coffee coming up this week. And I know we're gonna send out a lot of newsletters and correspondence as we put all of the finalized pieces together.
The biggest concern I heard from each of the parents, well, not the biggest, but one concern was that they would like to have known the preparation, you know, have the, have the choices now to know what the options would be. As opposed to going into this without that knowledge. And I think the other point that I did hear too is that we didn't consider half-days because the board had heard a lot about early, that type of early release. And parents that felt that if they would've known what the options were that we were considering. So that they would've had, okay, it's half-days or it's early release on a weekly basis or being able to put in, have input into that process. So I think those were the main, the main issues I've heard. Still wondering what, what will the options look like. I haven't had any concerns different than Chris or Laurie, we've pretty much been about the same.
Tony?
I had two parent contacts, they were both positive. One person just said, you know, it's about time, it'll be a lot easier to get them up in the morning. And then I had about a handful of juniors on students that had come up to me and pushed me on the back that they were pretty excited that they might be able to start school later. So that's about the only contact we had.
All right, any other comments on board?
Nancy, I have a question for you. Because one of the things that I heard tonight was intriguing, that in order to mitigate the problem of having a late start and an early release for a family on the same day, that take the second and fourth for primary and the third and first for secondary, or something of that. Even if it's slip flat. My concern is, is that if we, if we adopt the calendar as it's stated and presented to us, it clearly states in there that early release is every Wednesday at the elementary and second and fourth Wednesdays at the middle and high school. And I wouldn't want to box us in to approving it as stated if there's a different pattern of early release and late start that could be considered. That we, if we approved it, we couldn't walk it back later or change it.
If you approve the modifications, Tom would just change that, that, clarify that on the calendar. Because it says board approved.
So do we have to change the motion then?
If, if that's the one you're considering, you, you could, you would have to modify it to say, have the calendar reflect the change in the motion.
This one is a really hard one for me. You know, I think that we have spent a lot of time in the last couple of years asking two questions on an ongoing basis. One of which is what are the costs to something? And another one is what do our parents think? And it appears that we don't have additional costs to the district, although I think there's an open question about whether there's occasionally gonna be costs to the parents, which is something we should be concerned about. It's the other question then that comes into play here, which is what do our parents think? And I think what we have currently is we have a mix. And we have some parents who appear to be interesting, excited about this, and some parents who are very concerned about it for a variety of reasons. And I have the following concerns, and I'm not quite sure where we're going with this. I, I think that, you know, there is a lot of value in this proposal. I really believe that a lot of thought has been put into the idea that we need to do collaboration. But we have a whole series of sort of intersecting things, all of which have potential. The idea that we're gonna be able to do professional learning communities more is really important. The fact that this may move forward some objectives is important. But structurally, this, this has, at some extent, come down a little too fast for me personally to know what the right answer is in terms of exactly how we should put this into place, how we should do the collaborative release. And I don't know if the right answer is half-days or the specific piece we have or an alternative where we're doing some on Tuesdays and some on Wednesdays or what. I would be very interested in finding out more from parents about what their thoughts are and, and some of those differentials. I would be interested in understanding how different variations in this might affect the ability to do the collaboration more. I, I'm not ready to vote yes on this one. Mike hit something on the head earlier that, that I've heard in my head as I've looked at this a ton of times, which is, you know, we went down a path and said we didn't wanna do realignment because it was potentially a really good idea, but we weren't ready. My feeling is, on this particular occasion, sort of the same. And I would note for the record, for those of you who, you know, weren't here, that, you know, I was the one who voted in favor of realignment. I think, you know, some of these subjects are, are important to consider, to continue to consider. This happens to be one where I wanna understand this more, I wanna make sure parents understand it more. I wanna have some additional details, I wanna know what my options are. I wanna have greater clarity before I vote in favor. So that's where I'm at.
I will, I'll go back to that, the transit, the, where we, we're talking about realignment of school districts. I remember that discussion came up twice in my tenure here. And both times it came up, it came up, the primary reason that I remember was financial. Was to be able to equalize classrooms, equalize teachers, equalize class size from a financial aspect. I voted against the, the realignment because the, the opposite side of that was the most difficult time for our students is transitionally between elementary to middle school, middle school to high school. And what we were gonna do is, we have, add one more transitional piece into the equation. From a financial standpoint now, this plan that's presented in front of us is not gonna, currently, as we know it, add additional costs. And I'll go back to what I said before, this, this came from a leadership team that looked at and said, how are we gonna increase achievement? How can we, what are the best tools or models available to increase achievement? And that's how they came up with this. We've talked about professional learning communities for the last five, six years, as far as I can remember. And they never got very far. There was a multitude of reasons why they didn't get very far. One of them was our contracts. Our contracts don't exist as they did before. So now we have the opportunity to really make some substantial changes in the way we educate and we bring forward new models and new thought processes and hold accountability to everybody involved with our students. To me, it's just a critical piece to move this thing forward. Yes, it will be inconvenient. I'm not discounting any inconvenience, but I think the principals and the leadership teams have recognized that and are willing and trying to come up with alternatives to make the impact minimal. I'm not gonna say alleviated, because I don't think that's possible. I'm also a big believer that you can't believe, please, a hundred percent of the people, a hundred percent of the time. But when I look at it from an academic standpoint and an achievement standpoint, this model shows that it's the best for school districts. And it's been proven in a lot of school districts outside of Wisconsin. And we now are in a custom of doing something that we've talked about since you've been on the board with me, is increase our achievement. And here's a great example of one way we can do it. And that's why I'm, I'm supportive of it. I'm not, I'm not discounting our parents that are not gonna be happy. I'm not discounting any of that. I know that our administrative team and our leadership team has heard the voices and are taking steps. I would require and request feedback, like Stephanie had asked, on how the transition is working and what else could we do? To me, that'd be critical. So then the other question I have, and I don't know if it goes to Doug or goes to Lowell, and it ties into what Bill said, was if we don't, if this doesn't pass, what options do we have available? Because we have to get a calendar together. And that calendar ties into just the start of the whole budgetary process. And that'll be one of my comments when it comes up to school board agendas for future consideration, is mapping this out. So I'll ask you guys, and Tom, you included on this, we don't have a calendar tonight, where are we?
I would say we're getting close to that point where it's gonna be difficult for students to register for next year if we don't finalize what are our start times. Because it's hard to build a schedule if you don't know what's available. There's talk at the high school of using a zero hour for some of those days, supporting students before that, that time period. If we don't know that that exists or not, it will be difficult to schedule.
Would it be possible, I'm just gonna throw this on the table, since most of the issues appear to be at the elementary level, is there a way of doing this and starting with next year with the high school and the middle school? And then we would have that year to work out all of the logistical details, of which there will be many for the elementaries, and bringing them in the year after. Since they won't be able to all get together anyway because one's a late, or early release, one is a late start.
The calendar as it's presented, before Mr. Diacristo jumps out of his chair, the calendar as it's presented does not include any half-days, does not include collaborative release, workdays, anything else in it. The elementary staff already is the staff that has the least amount of collaboration time built into their school day. And it makes it impossible for them to move forward if you don't have that component in, in the calendar that's.
So what you're saying is we'd need then, like a separate elementary calendar versus middle and high school?
You would have to do something completely different and they're again would be faced with.
That would be an issue as well.
You don't have older siblings home because they're in school.
Got it, okay. Just thought I'd throw it on the table. Goodbye. I didn't mean to freak anyone out.
Back in your chair now?
All right, other comments or questions or?
Just two quick ones. I think we've actually accomplished quite a bit through our professional learning communities in the past couple of years. So I, you know, I, I think it's important to acknowledge that. I think it's important to acknowledge that those have been, that those have been something that, that we've been able to use as an avenue for moving certain things forward. And, you know, I would say that, you know, we can certainly look for other options to help those move forward more. The other piece of it is that, you know, that, all things I think that have been presented this number of years have had a dimension where we've looked at how they affect learning. And, you know, I, I don't want to be wholly disagreeable, but on the realignment, one of the ideas was that you put all the people from one grade into senior buildings, and they can work together and collaborate more effectively that way. That was a piece of it. It wasn't just all about cost. You know, I, I'm, this is, this is a really hard one for me. So I, I struggle with this great deal.
Well, now that we talked about the need for a calendar, I'm almost resenting the fact that I have two options. I either vote for this calendar, or I don't vote for it. I don't have a secondary or alternative calendar to vote for. It's almost shameful that we don't have that in front of us. So, you know, I have two options, yes or no, to this calendar. If I choose no, and a majority of this board votes no, the problem of having a calendar is now back on whoever presented this calendar. Don't know what else to say.
How much time does it take to build a calendar? We've got a framework in place. We've got the beginning, we know what day the school year starts, we know when certain holidays are. If this gets voted down, how much time is it going to take to construct a new one?
That I couldn't tell you. I mean, if we sat down and put our heads together and just focused on this, we'd do it until it gets done. You know, so could it be done in six or 12 hours if that's all you focused on, probably. But to answer Mike's concern as well, this didn't just come directly to the board. You know, this went through the committee first. Okay, so at least three of the board members, or I don't remember if anybody else was there, were aware of it. And it went out. So, we wouldn't just slap it on you. And I totally respect your position, but I understand what you're talking about. It's really, um.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. So, let's take a vote. All in favor of approving the calendar as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Nay.
May take counts.
Nay.
Definitely, Mike.
Stephanie, Mike. So, calendar has been approved. Please make sure that you communicate with your parents. You've got seven months before school starts, so, it sounds terrible, but seven months. Okay, under old business B, discuss and take possible action on the spelling curriculum. We heard from Wendy last, at our last meeting on math. Anyone have any questions, comments?
The only question I have is, Doug, was this budgeted for?
Not for this year, to my knowledge.
Okay, so what's the implementation date?
It'd be for the next school year.
Okay, and so, payment, is any payment due out of the current fund? And if so, we didn't budget, it's coming out of fund balance. So, what's the effect on fund balance?
Well, my understanding is that this was going to be for next year, right? So it would be budgeted for next year. There wouldn't be any payments made until the next fiscal year. So there'd be, assuming if the budget balanced, there'd be no effect on the fund balance.
Luca, the app is presented. Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor, aye. And anyone opposed? Okay, spelling curriculum has been approved. And letter C, discuss and take possible action to participate in the Perkins Grant Consortium.
Motion to approve is presented. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Right, number six, comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration?
I got to be careful. I'm not sure if this is for future consideration or, yeah, it would be a consideration. The comment I had, I had a discussion I'm going to point you out to.
That's right.
We had a great, great conversation today. His point is valid. I think what we can do for agenda items, as the example would be, discuss and take possible action of the 2012, 2013 calendar. Underneath that, possible changes for start time, end times, you know, just a little bit more, a little bit more detail without all the detail, and give them an idea to look at and say if they want to go deeper into it. That is one thing. My big thing is, and we got to figure this, we started talking about the finance committee, and I'd like to bring it back to the board once we get through there, but on our district website, is laying out a true, page one, page two, whatever, a formal, here are our dates of importance that we must, as a district, follow. I mean, when we do the calendar, when we do the open enrollment, when we do staffing, when we do, the, all of that, how it all ties together. Requires writing a white paper on it, so be, but something where everybody knows that come January, this is the major topics we're going to be talking about February. But it'd be posted, like for the whole year, so everybody can work and see where we are. Does that make sense?
What page is that on?
Oh, I, it's way underneath. So I, I think if you want to move it up, I'm totally with you.
Okay.
Could you see what I'm getting at?
Yes, it's hard to find.
Yes. We need to make this more complex. Okay? Does that, does that answer some of the questions that we talked about today?
It does. It does. I shouldn't have to go seven or eight clicks to get to something that gives me no detail.
Okay, so that's what we can talk about. That was it for me.
Hang on.
I'd like to have a discussion about the use of the alert now for agendas, everything else that we want to communicate to the public.
Say it louder, someone didn't get it.
A discussion on how to use alert now in a more meaningful fashion to. I'm early on agendas, and the important things that we're discussing here.
I'll tie this into that, Nancy. I think we need to have an overall discussion regarding the use of technology, incorporating communication to our family members. My example I brought up years ago, district emails, society, family district emails, that every family would have an email that the school district can communicate to, and principals can communicate to that, family's email. We're going to go truly in favor of society like we tried seven years ago. We now have the technology, we have the technology guru who works for us to improve that. So, but that would be a discussion I'd like to have. Do you know what I mean?
At one time we had talked about where people could go on the website and click what information that they would like to receive automatically by email, and that never materialized. So, if you wanted elementary newsletters, or if you wanted, you know, whatever, you could.
PTO or whatever.
Right. So.
We can, we can tee this up first at the finance committee next Monday, I believe, the week of today. But in the audit letter, it did state that there's some deficiencies in internal controls. I'd like us to make sure that we look at each one of these individually, if we have to assign out responsibilities, to ensure that any deficiencies in our internal controls are addressed in timely fashion, so that we are fully in compliance with any type of gap reporting requirements. So, notice.
All right, any other agenda items for future?
Nancy, I had two items that I think are more facilities related, but there's a, people have been mentioning air conditioning, the gymnasium, that have been lacking for years.
Like 50?
And in general, they're saying the pool, the pool and the locker room surrounding them. I don't, I don't know that those, I think those are more appropriate for the facilities and finance.
Okay, number seven, board member announcements. The only announcement I have is that, save the dates, Saturday, March 17, is the Whitnell Falcon, Falcon Booster Club Community Social and Fundraiser will be held at the new Greenfield Community Center. So, put that date on your calendar. All right, number eight, motion to adjourn into closed session.
Nancy, do you guys have a work session scheduled, maybe for February or something?
We do not, but we need to get one scheduled.
The February 6th, remember I sent the email out about the strategic planning workshop with administrators? And did they please respond?
No.
Do you want to know how many responses I got?
Zero.
There you go.
Can you send that out again?
There's two, two Mondays, this, the sixth, and then the other odd Monday, you know, after our 14 year, whatever that'd be, 14 days later, yes, six and 14. And we need to confirm one or the other with our strategic planning group.
Could you send that out again, Joe?
Six thirty.
Okay. Motion to adjourn into closed session for stat, state statute 19.851C to discuss superintendent mid-year evaluation. Will you roll call on that to us? Bill?
No. Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Yes. Mike?
Yes.
And Stephanie?
Yes, I'm just going to make the motion in just a second.
No, I'll make the motion. I'll say. Technically, should we do that again?
Technically, you want to do it again?
Yep. No?
Peter?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Thank you.